Shop for insurance is now in session. The insurance committee is going to make a presentation.
Good afternoon, Board. I'm Andy Burnett, Insurance Chair. Coming with you for recommendations for insurance for 2022. As you know, last year, we came to you and we asked you, the Board, to do all HSA plans. And there were some concerns expressed by the Board at that time. They wanted us to do some educational things. And they did, we did bring back a, the highest benefit-wise HSA that added to our plans. So right now, we currently have four, three HSAs, and still the one Plan C, the PPO. We did our video to educate our employees. As of just a few minutes ago, we've had 1,125 of our 1,463 employees watch these videos. That's 77%. In effect, we've had 39 of 82 employees watch it, so that's 48%. So, a pretty good amount of them have watched the videos, and they've been available since pre-planning.
And the video includes what?
There's a couple of the, of the Insurance Committee members speaking on it. Bateson Hewitt is in there, South State Bank is in there. And we've had some of our employees gave their experiences with using HSAs. Some of the things that they, you know, personally found valuable. And we thought that would, you know, help an employee make a decision if they could hear their peers talk about it.
Would this be applicable to retirees as well?
Yes, ma'am.
And that was sent to them as well?
It is on the, the website, our school board website.
It's on the website, and if I'm not, I'm speaking out of turn, but Tammy mailed a letter to all of them.
Oh, okay.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, well, that's good. As long as they were notified that.
Right.
Yes, ma'am. And that's what we're bringing to you today. We're coming back where we would keep three of our plans, three HSA plans. We have Plan C, D, and E. Again, all three of those are HSA. And we're coming back to recommend dropping the Plan C, PPO plan, which, right now, we have, and Tammy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was 52 employ, or 52 of those plans currently in force, correct?
52 C?
PPO.
On PPO Plan C, yes, ma'am. Is it more than that?
Yes, there is.
Okay, I had written down 52 on my notes, so. Okay.
Do you know offhand how many more?
Yeah, I'd be interested in knowing that, too. I have, in my notes from the other day, it was 52.
That's what I had.
Eight employees.
Yeah, I opted out of school board insurance because my history is so bad, I thought it would help you guys.
You're not on Medicare?
I'm on Medicare, yeah.
Yeah, well, then you don't.
I don't need it anyway, yeah.
How many?
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm showing about 335.
On Plan C? Might have been the retirees, I'm sorry, yeah.
Have we heard from any of them since they've seen the information? Do we have any?
I received one phone call this morning, and they were going to watch the meeting live on the website, because it's posted on the website.
This meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We're actually being livestreamed right now.
Yeah, he told me, but I never know what that means.
Andy, read me the recommendation.
The, the recommendation is that for the 2022 school years, the Putnam County School District offer HSA plans only, which are Plans C, D, and E.
And your criteria for making that decision was?
And I've been, I've been chairman, I think, about a year and a half now. It's been, once, once we've looked at all the numbers and trying to do what's best for our employees, and one of the big things, at least as an administrator, that I think about is employee retention and health insurance. And I can, I can, I think I'm covering, I'm speaking for Brian Helms, too, because he said the same thing. Just with employee retention, we've got to make our benefits better and less expensive to our employees. And I mean, we, we have a hard enough time keeping people right now. To me, this is a big selling point when you look at people, is the benefits that we offer.
We've got some employees reluctant to take their kids to the doctor as well because of some of this stuff. So, you know, I don't, I don't particularly, none of us want to do anything that hurts anybody. But I think the Insurance Committee recommendation is pretty solid, and, and you wouldn't have done it. Paul Smith wouldn't be here in favor of it if it wasn't a good thing, so. I had to say that, Paul, you know I'm messing with you.
I just want to, you know, along with what I was asking you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, to make the benefits better and more affordable. So, I understand that this will make it more affordable, but how is it making the benefits better?
Well, that's something, once we, we are, because the HSA plans are basically subsidizing a lot of the PPO, the PPO plan right now. And then we'll be able to come back and look at things that we can do better once we build up our insurance reserves and things of that nature. But this is a part of the process.
And so that, oh, excuse me.
I just want Andy to repeat because since this is being livestreamed, I don't know if you can hear Tammy. But would you mind just echoing what Tammy said, or Tammy come up and say?
Tammy, why don't you come on up, since you know it?
I just want to make sure that you, what Tammy said.
Yes, sir.
Especially if you have other people watching that are in.
About the number of employees?
I think the question was the number of, the number of employees on Plan, on the PPO Plan C.
I just want to make sure whoever's watching is giving the accurate.
Yes, sir.
The retirees, for sure, will want to see that.
And so those 300-plus will be notified that we are doing away with the PPO?
But Tammy responded that.
They will be notified, but there's 319. There's 319 employees and 48 retirees.
Okay.
Well, plus you've got families, so it'd be 52. And Tammy, they were notified to, well, to watch the HSA video. Yes, ma'am. And then if they had questions, where were the questions to you?
They would have contacted me, or they would have contacted their insurance person at their school.
Okay.
And you got one call?
I got one call from retiring. And so it looks like they are going to be, that 319 are going to be okay with that going away.
I have not heard, they haven't stated otherwise.
Kind of have signif, I mean, you know, implied.
And that was why, you know, I want to speak for the Board, but that's, that was your concern last year around this time. And that's why we did the videos that we sent out to try to educate people, so.
And that's also why the, the new edge, the new C was the high deductible C. That's when that was created.
Yeah, and it's hard to make that deductible.
I've never, I've never seen any change in insurance be popular when it's like this. And it's inevitable that it happens, it depends on who's using it. We're in a, we're in a weird time in America, folks, and right here at home, for people using medication and, and using medical services.
I need to watch that video.
If we could make people happy, I'd make them happy, but you can't, you can't always do that, you know?
Andy, just for clarification, did you say C and E, or C and D?
It would be, Mr. McGee, there's two Plans C. There's the PPO Plan C, which we would drop. And we would currently offer Plan CHSA, Plan D HSA, and Plan E HSA.
So that's three.
Three HSA plans, yes, ma'am.
Can I, can I speak briefly to the new C?
Sure.
Because I'm one of the holdouts that was on the CPPO up until this last year. And I saw the writing on the wall and knew that we would eventually go this route, because we had discussed it many times with the Board. And the new HD, HP, High Deductible Health Plan, Plan C, we call it, has a, has a deductible of only $1,400, not near as high as the $5,500 of D and the $6,500 of E. And, and I know it would be hard for people, but with the education and knowing that the money they save, they'll put it on the HSA card, which is exactly what I did. So, I'm still about out of pocket the same amount, but I'm putting that money toward an HSA, never thinking, because I don't go to the doctor very often, never thinking that the very year I go, I would have quite a few health issues. And the HSA has actually worked out perfectly for me. Yes, did I meet my deductible early on in the year, probably February. So I was $1,400 out of pocket. But even now, when I go to the doctor, I'm going cheaper now because you're paying 20% of the allowable cost. So a regular doctor's visit where I was paying, what was it, 30 copay, or did it go up to 40? I can't remember.
It was 30.
30. I'm now paying 18 as my co, as my copay, if you want to call it that, when I go to the doctor now.
Rhonda, if, I'm sorry, if there's money that you don't use on that card, what happens to it?
It's yours, it stays with you.
Okay, so it rolls over?
It rolls over. You can use it for things out of pocket that aren't prescription at a store, like Band-Aids.
That's good.
And it can also be converted to a retirement plan if you ever decide you want to do that.
Would you, would you explain for those listening that are on the old C, if they come to the new C, the card? What is the card and the money?
The card is, is called, anytime you have a high deductible health plan, you can have an HSA, which is a health savings account. We do that through, what's their name now, South?
The bank.
South State Bank. And it's no cost to the employee to have that. And we can do payroll, when they're taking out the money for your health insurance. They, they changed their name, they, they were bought out, I believe.
I didn't know what he was, I didn't know what we were talking about.
You can also have a payroll deduction, and it's a tax, you know, it's tax-free, that money that you're putting over into that HSA. So we can do, through payroll deduction, add money to your HSA card. Then you can use that HSA card when you're at a doctor's office and you're having to pay that, you know, that 20% of your bill or anything like that, and you take it right from your HSA. There's no taxable consequences of that at, at year end. You'll get a form, and as long as you state on there that you used all of your withdrawals for medical purposes, there's no tax consequences of the money you withdraw from the HSA, even though it went in there tax-free.
And so when.
Go ahead, Sandy.
I'm still trying to get it all spelled out. So, so I am an employee. Every month, I want them to automatically withdraw, or deduct, rather, from my check $35, $40. And that money goes on that card. And as I'm going to the doctor, if I don't go at all, at the end of the year, I, that, that money is mine. I can put it in retirement, like you said, or whatever.
I'm not sure how long you have to put it into a retirement, but you can roll it and continue to add to it, you know?
And even the next year, the following year?
And you can use the old money, you know, and everything. But when you, if you ever get to the point where you feel like you've got too much on there, you can roll it to a tax-sheltered annuity.
Okay, and that's what, that's what the people, the employees need to hear that may not have watched it, or may have watched it and had that question.
And all that information was on some of the videos.
Awesome, awesome.
Rhonda, thank you for your experience in knowing how to roll cards and do things that can happen that, that down the road, it can help our employees because you know these pitfalls are going to happen. Our employees are like I used to be when I'd go to get a loan somewhere in a bank. I wondered what's best for me and what was worse for the bank or the loaning institution. They want what's best for them and their families and what's hardest on them. They don't, they don't, it doesn't bother them. They, they need the coverage, and we do, thank goodness, you've been planning ahead and rigged the team to get us where we are. But, you know, you, and then you wind up giving health insurance, and the next thing you wind, up in collective bargaining with not giving enough money. So, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. But I think it's very important what you've done, and it, it's going to help to make this decision a little, little easier.
And, oh, excuse me, excuse me, go ahead.
She's had her hand up for a long time.
I didn't see, I didn't. I'm being a good student. I think my question is twofold. First, I heard Sandy say you put in a certain amount of money. There's no premium with this?
Yes, but it's a lower cost than, of course, C is.
It's a much.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a lot, much lower.
So are we still giving our Board contribution?
Yes.
Okay, so with the C, D, and E, then there's different amounts of premium. It's like we used to have, one costs more than the other and yada, yada, yada.
It's what we've had every year, and even when you Board approved the rates this past year, you had old C, which is the PPO.
Right.
D, E, and new C, and it, it showed on that chart, you still gave the same amount. Your Board contribution was the same. So the amount out of pocket for the employees with each plan went down, what they had to pay out of pocket.
And I, I'm sorry, I haven't watched the video, I didn't even realize it was on there, so I'll go back and watch that.
And I haven't watched it.
Yeah, she, she brought me the rates and everything. So, for like an employee, on, what I was paying last year was $416.93 out of my check for regular C every month. And that's after the Board contribution of $450 a month. When I changed to the CHSA, it's $237.81. So I put that additional amount, almost the whole amount. I'm putting $150 a month into my HSA, and I'm pocketing a little bit more in my paychecks than I was before. But our lowest plan now, this is for your, maybe I'm going to say your young, really healthy people.
Your 22-year-old new teacher.
Yeah, that only have, I mean, that hardly ever go out of their paycheck. It's $66.32 if they're once-a-month paid. And they can still get their wellness checks, correct me if I'm wrong. They don't have to pay anything for going to the doctor and having all the wellness pieces done.
That's great.
No one on any plan has to pay for that or anything.
Because that's usually all they need.
Yeah, generally.
I have a question. We did, we still have the telemedicine, did that work okay last year?
As, as of right now, and I can let Benji, if you want to come and talk about the numbers, because the committee didn't make a hard decision on, on teledocs yet, but I'll let him explain the numbers.
I haven't ever used it myself.
Yeah, tell, so there was the new Health issue program that was implemented for those on the high deductible plans. When we look at a performance on their metrics, year-to-date, that's cost a district about $35,000. They have savings of, I think, $11,000 and change. But I will say, I think it's underutilized. We're working on traditional things. And again, I think the point behind that was, was eliminating barriers. So how that's written, since it's a separate product, you can still do that telemedicine for zero cost and not have to pay it out of pocket.
Wow.
So I mean, it, it, it's, it's a good program, I think it's underutilized. And I think it's not just, it's not just the school thing. Other, it's just, I think, just we're all learning and doing that. And then also, kind of, hard to say right now with everything going on, because a lot of people might be, with COVID and everything, has that impacted the numbers? Because we just don't know, because we've only had it one year.
More.
Or do you not use it as much because everything's about that, and we're not going to go to that? So then, I, I don't, I mean, these are things we've been wrestling with. But, I mean, A, yes, I think it's, it's, it eliminates that. It's, well, you're doing away with this, correct, but you also have this as an option. And I think, like anything else, I think we can better educate and, you know, utilize that. So it's not, it's not great, but it's not, you know, but it's not, people, but people are using it, but it could always be improved.
Do you know how many people actually used it last year?
Yeah, we, we'll send, we can send you a full report.
It sure is.
Well, you know, as long as we keep pushing it, encouraging people.
That's a viable way for people.
Yeah.
Young people, just to check in.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think, once, it takes that time, though. Once you use it, you continue to use it. But a lot, my wife, like a year ago, she's like, what do I do, da-da-da? And I said, you got telemedicine. And she's like, you tell me about this, you know what I mean? But until, and she's like, and now she uses it all the time.
Well, it's not instant, is it? You call up, make an appointment, then you need.
The average.
Tammy, do telemedicine.
Yeah, I've got, I think the average.
That was a pretty size.
Tammy, do you have that report, or? Okay, I'm having computer issues, but I want to say it's like an eight-minute wait.
And I need checked out.
I'm just thankful we didn't have cell phones when I was in school.
You'd be in jail.
I would have been out.
You'd be in jail.
Yeah.
Because you don't have control.
I'd have been as bad as Thomas Bowden.
My question, Rhonda, was, when you switch from old C to the new C, did you keep your same primary doctor, or did you have any issues with changing?
So you can still go to your own doctor? They have no limitation on that?
The networks for all plans remain the same.
That's, and, and that's been an issue. That was an issue with me before with lose, you know, when we were talking about getting rid of C. I didn't want to not be able to go to my established doctors. Mark, what say you?
I've been on Plan E for a couple of years now.
E?
Plan E, yeah. And the first year, we switched to it.
Mark, do you want to come up and sort of televising it?
Introduce yourself so everybody knows.
Mark Modle, President Putnam Federation of Teachers, Insurance Committee member, chemistry teacher at Placa High School for 18 years now. So, my wife and I, family, we were on Plan C for, well, Plan B, I guess, for a long, long time. Plan C, when we eventually switched. The first year that we switched over to Plan E, and Lindsay doesn't mind me sharing this, because I think I've talked about it before, she actually had to have a procedure. And so we hit her out-of-pocket max for that year, which was the same as the out-of-pocket max would have been on Plan C. But we hadn't paid all that money into premiums, we'd put it into the HSA account. And so even in that first year, when we hadn't had time to build it up, we did have the benefit that both of us were employees, we could control. But, so, so we wound up, we had to pay a tiny bit out of pocket that didn't come from the HSA just because it was early in the year and we hadn't been able to contribute enough. But now, our HSA account is, I don't recall the balance off the top of my head, but it's, we've got a good chunk of money, and it's been a couple of years since then, and we've got a chunk of money in there that what we would have been paying into premiums on Plan C is in our HSA account. And that's our money.
And you can roll it.
So, and so, you know, that's, that's the big benefit here. And that's one of the things a lot of people overlook or don't realize. They think, well, what if something bad, big, happens? The out-of-pocket max is the same. So your maximum responsibility is going to be the same over the course of that calendar year, whether you're on Plan C or Plan E or D. But you have paid more upfront in your premiums on Plan C, you know?
How does hospitalization work with that?
What do you mean?
Well, like, do you have to pay your hospital bill from your, what you've saved in your HSA account?
When Lindsay went in, you know, she was, it was an outpatient procedure, but when she went in, we had some that we paid upfront, you know, kind of, hospital has the deal where you get a discount if you pay prepaid kind of stuff. And so we did that out of the HSA account. But the out-of-pocket max would be the same. If you went to the hospital and were there for an extended period of time, the out-of-pocket max is still the same.
Okay, that's what I wasn't, see, and there are a lot of people out there, kind of like me, a little slow about understanding this. And I think information is the most important thing in an explaining it in a way that people like me would understand. Because I'd, I don't know why I was thinking you would have to pay, like, if you were in the hospital seven days, how, how would you pay that out of what you're putting in? But that's not how it works. You pay deductible or whatever.
Right, they're still, you know.
Is it like 80/20, or?
Well, so, so the big difference is, who pays the first dollars? That's really what it comes down to, right? I mean, the big difference is, if you're on Plan C, then you've got your copays and your deductibles, the low deductible, but you've got copays, where the insurance company is paying a good, a chunk of the early stuff. With the, with the high deductible plans, you know, until you reach that deductible, it's all coming out of your, your pocket or your HSA account. So you're taking the early risk, and that's why the premiums are less, because the insurance company doesn't have to get in, get into it until you're farther along. But, so I think that's the, the big difference is, you know, who pays those first dollars? You know, on the, on the high deductible plans, it's the person, it's the employee, you know, the original.
Consumer, yeah.
Consumer, yeah. So, but we've, we've, we've been happy with it. And I tell you, that, that first year, we were like, ooh. First year, we've barely had time to put any money in the account, but it worked out okay, you know? And since then, you know, I mean, we, you can use it, I've used it for my contact lenses. I've used it for, I mean, any, any medical-related expenses can come out of that HSA, you know? Dentist, you know, the dentist, the contacts, anything related to that. You go to the store and you buy some over-the-counter medications, you know, buy some Tylenol, right? That, that counts too, right?
And just whip out your white.
Yeah, vitamins.
Like, I'm on a sing, I'm on a single plan, and, and my son had to go to the dentist today, and I just said, here, come get my card before you go.
Really?
So he could use it, yeah.
So you can use it for pretty much anything? Well, I think it's very important to have these testimonies from people that have actually maybe been hesitant to switch over to an HSA plan, and that it has been successful.
Yeah.
That's very important.
Had a conversation.
If we get into HIPAA problems by asking personal questions, let us know.
They're, they're disclosing.
Yep.
You know, volunteers, you feel like they need to answer a question, if that makes sense?
I don't think we've asked any personal questions, really. I mean, they volunteered that information.
HIPAA applies to the medical service providers, you know, not, so. You can ask me anything you want, I can choose to answer or not.
Oh, no, right.
So, my sister, I will say that my sister had a conversation with me, kind of last minute. This was a couple of years ago before, before the enrollment. And she, or maybe she talked to me after, and I said, we should really talk the numbers because you're, you're putting a lot, throwing, I said, throwing away a lot of money in premiums there that, that you probably don't need to be. And she was, her biggest concern was that, well, what if something big happens? And I told her, the out-of-pocket max is the same. You know, so your, your responsibility, if something catastrophic happens, or not even catastrophic, I mean, doesn't take, doesn't take anything catastrophic to get your out-of-pocket max, that's, that's for sure.
So out-of-pocket match and deductible, is, are they synonymous? Are they the same thing? No?
No, no, no. For the, for Plan E, they are essentially the same thing. The, the deductible on Plan E is, is very, very close to the out-of-pocket max, if I remember correctly. Only a few hundred dollars difference, is that right? I think that's correct. $6,500, $6,550, let's see.
So that's how much you would pay before the insurance started kicking in?
That's your deductible, that you would have to pay that before the insurance kicks in. Once you hit the out-of-pocket max, you hit your maximum, you don't pay anything else, not 20%, nothing, anything else you do throughout the year.
Okay, here it is. So the, the deductible on Plan E is $5,500. So we paid all of that, and then we paid 50% of the whatever came after that, up to $6,650. And then we didn't pay a dime after the $6,650.
So if you have that much money on your card, you could pay that with that card?
Yep, yep. And, and again, for, for both of us working with the school district, I think it's $7,100 a year that we can put into a family plan.
72.
72, is it up now? Okay, went up, yeah, okay, yeah, it goes up a little bit each year, kind of, sometimes. But, but we, and we, I will say, the key, one of the most important things to the employees is that they, the difference in the premiums that they're saving need to go into the HSA.
Was that to, explain to them, like, if you pay this much?
But that's, that's the key. If you don't, if you don't put the money in HSA, that, that's where the downside is. But, but the savings and premiums, you know, I mean, that's all we did. We just said, here's what it would have cost us for Plan C. Let's just roll it in.
Yeah, and it was like, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out what's better.
And then if you don't use it, it's still your money. The premiums are gone, that belongs to the insurance company. But, but the unused HSA dollars, those are still mine.
And mark your mind, the HSA funds will be, get a tax deduction on that as well.
Yeah, that's a pre-tax, yeah.
So not only do you get insurance, you get a savings account?
And, and you get, and you get a tax deduction on that.
And a tax deduction, so three things.
The biggest thing, you know, is funding that account. The, the negative is when somebody, well, I had this and it wasn't funded. But when there's money in that account, it really starts to click. But it takes a little bit. I mean, I, I personally have one, and it's like, you know, now, I'm like, I want to maximize this because I'm looking at it long-term.
I mean, yeah, you can't go shopping.
And it, well, another thing, too, when we look at the different plans, we've got different entry points. So someone would start at Plan CHSA. And as they built that plan up, then they've got more money, then they can go to D or E.
Yeah.
Save, and they can put more money potentially in that plan. So that's another way to look at.
Is that all in that video?
It's, it's, I mean, we did 30 minutes.
Yeah.
And then we've done a lot of handouts, education materials as well.
Have y'all gotten many calls from employees?
Not recent, not, not about the video, no, but during the open enrollment throughout the year, yes.
They were asking good questions and, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you look at the numbers, there's only, you know, out of 951, there's only 280 that aren't on a high deductible health plan with a health savings account. So for a lot of people, they've been on it.
The majority are.
The majority of the population has been on this for a number of years.
Y'all convinced me, I.
Well, they don't just willy-nilly sit around and not study these things in those Insurance Committee meetings.
Nobody thought they did.
They did a lot of, a lot of, a lot of serious negotiating and work and talk and thoroughly vet program. And even with that, once the faculty reps go back and tell the news, the people still not going to be happy, so it's.
Until a friend that they trust has used it.
Tell somebody they trust.
And it'd be word of mouth.
Like a Mark and a Rhonda.
Those personal stories make a difference.
Right, they make a difference.
But really, I mean, if you sit down and look at your, the premium cost, and then you look at, I mean, it's, it's such a differential now. it really makes sense. I mean, it's just like, why wouldn't you do that and put that in the bank?
That's right. I just crunched the numbers and said, well, I mean, this is, you know, it's a no-brainer to switch, because this is money going over here. I'm, you know, I'm, I've still got the, the big catastrophic benefits, but I'm, you know, I've got the money in the HSA to cover the doctor's visits and things like that. And the telehealth combined with this, you know, if...
It's going to even be better.
The, the office visits that cost you out of pocket, well, the telehealth is less expensive even. I mean, so you get the, the combined benefits of that, you know, it even costs you less out of your HSA.
There's probably a lot of districts going to this, too.
Well, and we're doing it early, so hopefully people see this. If they've got something, you know, if they're on a prescription drug, fill those scripts before the first of the year, right? That way, it's not, you know, if you can, you know, but a lot of times you can get ninety-day prescriptions. So now's the time to start taking, if you're on the traditional C, take advantage of those benefits. So that way, you, you know, hopefully can have extended period of those prescription medicines. So when the new plan starts, you're not having to get a prescription filled day one, when potentially your Health Savings Account is at zero. So that's another tip.
Is there any tips, like for, I don't know, Mark, does your wife work in the school district?
She does.
So are there any tips for both employees, or, I mean, both members of the family that, I mean, about which is the best? I'm just wondering.
Do y'all do two singles or one family and one single, or?
You know, this last year was the first time that we went to the, all in the family, because it was always, the numbers always worked out so funny before, where it was always, it saved a little bit of money to have one employee with children and the other just employee only. But this year, it always, it's just a little weird thing, the numbers.
It's a little weird.
This year, it, it, this past year, it changed, and so it was actually cost-effective for us to go on one plan, which is easier, because we have the one plan now. But the biggest benefit of both employees working in this year, we have twice the contribution we can put into the, we can, we can put more in the HSA that way, you know? So, so it just, it's, it's worked out really well for us. Even though, even despite the fact that that first year, we had more medical expenses than we'd had in ten years, and then the first year on HSA, we hit it. Still worked out, but still worked out, you know, just fine for us, so.
The one thing I remember you saying last year, Mark, was about the GoodRx and how you shop for your prescriptions. And you pay a lot more attention, because it's coming from you.
That's right, yeah.
And so I think that could, you know, that could be an extra educational point, because prescriptions are expensive, and I guess you need to...
That, that's another area we used, you know, the HSA, I gave, gave my card to Nicholas, because he had doctor visits. He, we, he, he got a prescription for Accutane. He had to see the dermatologist, and that stuff's expensive, and so were those doctor's visits, but, but that was all, you know, HSA paid for all that. And Lindsay still had, at that time, I guess we gave him Lindsay's card. She had, we had originally had two separate HSA accounts, because we had the separate plans. Now we're all one, and she's, but she still had a little money left in hers that he was using, so that he could take her card, and we still had our card here and stuff. But, but, yeah, shopping around with the GoodRx, you know, it makes, makes the consumer more cost-conscious and, you know, it doesn't matter, I mean, it doesn't matter what it costs, if it's all going on the plan, right? But to the employee, anyway, to the consumer, but, but when it's your first dollar, then it does, it makes a difference. And, you know, it makes a more difference personally, you know? Makes people think a little bit about what they're going to buy. I know, some of us, I know Paul's talked with us before, shopping around for prescriptions and stuff, you know? But it makes a difference.
Doctor, sir, so do you need a recommendation for this? I mean, for us to vote on?
It's on our agenda.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Madam Chairman.
It's on our agenda, it's on our regular meeting.
Board meeting.
Okay, well, I just thought we, we could do it here, but...
If it helps, I've got an HSA, too, so it's...
Benji, don't go anywhere yet. I need to ask you some, no, it's about something else.
Yeah, this will be on the agenda to be considered.
Okay. I, I just wanted to make sure, because I've, I've been through this so many years that I, this is almost deja vu. You know, you, you go along, rock along a couple of years, and everything's fine, and then the bottom falls out. And I, as I think of what you and the employees and the whole staff and the board have had to endure with COVID and the parents, I go back and remember the late nineties, when we had the meningitis outbreak, and they went to Placa High, we vaccinated three thousand kids at Placa High School. You were probably there, yeah?
I was there.
That's, that's interesting, but I, you know...
Wish we could do it now.
Well...
It does make a difference, I think. Mark talked about shopping, shopping around for the prescription drugs, and we've done that, too. You can really save a lot of money just by, you know, doing the ninety-day plan, have a shift or whatever.
You can have your medicine come through the mail. It's a lot cheaper.
I'm telling you, you get a prescription for nine hundred or five hundred dollars, and you almost die from seeing that. You know, it's just, it's crazy. It is crazy.
That's one of the problems we have now with everything, is the price, the big pharmacy, but on us...
I think that's it.
Well, I do think as a board, I would just like to say thank you to the Insurance Committee, and I just want to reiterate that in the past, we were hesitant as a board because of the education piece. And the committee went out of their way to create a video, so that people would be more knowledgeable and that, that would, you know, maybe make them ask questions. And so, you know, the committee has done everything that we asked for the committee to do, including last year adding that high deductible C plan. So does anyone have anything else?
And I think that's been a process. I think this has been talked about, and I think just getting people that know this, giving them, doing the video, and I think it's been a, it's not an overnight thing.
Right.
It's been a process.
It's more of a...
The idea is for people kind of...
Rick, Rick, it's more of a good-faith bargaining-type process in, in the medical area, like we've tried to do in, in collective bargaining over the years, and I, I think it worked quite well. I, I feel sorry for you guys on the Insurance Committee, because I know you catch a lot of grief. Tough.
Anybody have anything further?
Because it's never going to be, your insurance is free.
I'll make a motion, we can close the meeting, man.
Meeting's adjourned.